It's kind of a complicated topic.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
They'll understand that.
Okay, so glad it was news and yes, it's good news.
I don't know why they hired that firm. I mean, that firm seemed to, you know, be a decent firm, but I, I wasn't very impressed with what they.
You know, the board of directors, some of the oldest areas of business, GTI went in for me and they went nuts, you know? So, you know, the banner of you could leave the wood for you guys, but it didn't happen. Not down the line, I watched. Now, the mall got some relief. I know Baruch's a pretty large.
Well, I think the mall probably had. I mean, you know, I, I think you should, you gotta, you gotta, I would assume you gotta assess that at its, at its rental, how much is it producing per square foot? And it's like a ghost town.
And there's a million comps. There's a lot of dying malls out there where there's no.
Yeah, and it's a ghost, it's, you know, I mean, really, it's.
How many different formats do you have?
I can't think, I, when we were first, well, my daughter was little. We'd go out to dinner on Friday night and then for entertainment, we'd go to the mall and sort of walk or shop around or, or something like that. You know, now, I, since GNC closed and I get vitamins, you know, at the, at the, at the Walgreens or wherever.
Right.
I have, yeah, or Marshalls, my wife goes in Marshalls or I would go in Marshall. But that's it.
And then add the couple of extra lights. I'm just saying, just for, for ease, you know, for.
Hey Jim, there you are.
Exactly, because it's almost.
Hey, I was hoping to talk to you. Unfortunately.
It's like, okay, what am I looking at now?
Uh, you know, talk to you after.
I, I just want to make it easy.
I want to talk to you about that, you know? I remember you said something about the, uh, the. So I have a name of, I have names of like six or seven streets that we like. I was wondering if you could give me some guidance instead of just going off.
Hey, I just.
Look for watch that?
Have, these are some guidance that stipulates what.
Bumper bumper.
Does the power count? The bumper to bumper power?
So thirty-two feet would be what the standard is for residential to be able to allow for parking on both sides and two-way trailer. I did not know that, thank you.
Oh yeah, it's in there. We, we define the streets, don't we? Uh, uh, feeders and don't, don't we have arterials?
My thought process was instead of. My thought, my thought process was instead of giving the six or seven eighty streets, we apply it to something, if there's a thing in writing that actually says it.
Okay, these would be grandfathered.
Open the Oglesby City Council meeting.
Augur Bay?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Miaski?
Here.
Gravara?
Here.
Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion and second to approve the minutes from the January fourth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the January four, twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye. Public comments on agenda items only. Hearing done, we'll move on. And before we, uh, get to the bills, um, I'd like to point out the, um, City of Highland on page three, uh, there's an error in the building, uh, and, uh, there's been no checks written, uh, and, uh, they're correcting it and, uh, sending us a, a, uh, a new bill. So with that, um, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, approve the bills as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye.
Just so we're clear on the record, that, that motion should be with the exception of the Highland bill.
Correct.
Cause you said, yeah, okay. Just so we put it in the, the minutes that way.
Okay, moving on. Approval of the twenty twenty-fourth quarter building permits report totaling twenty-five million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, uh, of which, and just to note, uh, uh, GTI's building permit was, that they paid was seventy-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the twenty twenty-fourth quarter building permits report totaling twenty-five million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye. Approve ordinance, one one four nine dash zero one one eight two one, abating taxes levied for the year twenty twenty, payable in the year twenty twenty-one, to pay debt service on general obligation, refinancing bond series twenty twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance one one four nine zero one one eight two one, abating taxes, uh, taxes levied for the year twenty twenty, payable in the year twenty twenty-one, to pay debt service on general obligation, refunding bonds series, series twenty twenty A.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye. Approve ordinance, one one five zero dash zero one one eight two one, authorizing the execution of an agreement for the study of services between the City of Oglesby and Ameren Illinois Company.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, one one five zero dash zero one one eight two one, authorizing the execution of an agreement of study of services between the City of Oglesby and Ameren Illinois Company.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye. Recommendation to be given to the Oglesby Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to promote to the rank of Sergeant in the Oglesby Police Department.
With the, um, the loss of Sergeant Padiya, uh, leaving for another position, we had the opening of a sergeant or someone to move up into the sergeant place. We did promote the two sergeant, the officer who is currently working in Trident, which still leaves the department without a supervisor or sergeant on each of the shifts. It is our intent to promote, uh, the next in line, which would be Hugo, uh, to the sergeant position. The sergeant that is in Trident would maintain seniority over Hugo should that, uh, person decide to come back down from Trident. Are there questions about that? Concerns?
No.
No.
All right, I would like to make the motion, uh, a recommendation to be given to the Oglesby Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to promote to the rank of Sergeant in the Oglesby Police Department.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye. Authorization to approve the purchase of a new vehicle for the Oglesby Police Department using Trident funds.
With one of our vehicles being out of commission, um, and will be sequestered for, I'm not sure what long period of time, we have the need to put another vehicle in place in the department. Coincidentally, the truck that we had tried to purchase several months back, just came back in, into the, um, into his, uh, department there, and so we are able to get that truck. We would be utilizing funds from Trident to pay for that. Funds that would come out of the city would be to outfit the inside of the truck. Are there questions about my reason for wanting the truck? Um, otherwise, I'd like to, I'd like the authorization to approve the purchase of a new vehicle for the Oglesby Police Department using Trident funds.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Do you just have a ballpark number? I was looking for.
Twenty-seven, was that it?
Okay, just so I have a number, but yes, aye.
Thank you.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye. Next on the list, approved raffle license application for the Illinois Valley Community College.
I will make a motion to approve raffle license application for Illinois Valley Community College.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Aye. The whole business, I don't believe we have anything. Public comments? Having done, we'll move on. Commissioner reports.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Um, in the, um, from the police department side or for the community side, we have had some malicious vandalism and rumor of inappropriate activity in some of our parks. For example, at McFedron Park, the porta potty was tipped over, rocks were thrown, um, onto the, uh, the lake. We have even had, uh, notification that people are down there on those little hills or sledding and then onto the ice. You know, today it might not be a problem, but I'm not sure how warm it's gonna get and it may be a problem. I would really not like to see the kids on that particular lake, but to sled elsewhere. Uh, also heard rumors of people drinking in the Dickinson House parking lot and, and things like that. Uh, that's a rumor. I don't have any fact that it's occurred, but, uh, I have discussed this with our Chief of Police. Uh, while his officers do patrol the parks, they're going to increase their surveillance there just a little bit to see if we can, uh, track down who's actually causing some of these minor problems. Uh, overall, I know that everybody has heard about the COVID nineteen vaccine becoming available for community and that is true. I can tell you that those people who work in, as first responders, such as fire, ambulance, police, those people working in manufacturing, um, supermarkets and those type of things are going to be considered for this first round, um, in addition to those individuals who are sixty-five and older. In order to sign up for the vaccine, you need to go online to LaSalleCounty.org. I do know that it's been very busy signing up, so you may have to try several times. It's a very simple form. They just ask for your name, uh, your phone number, your email address and how you qualify. So if you're over sixty-five, that's all you have to do is the pull-down box for sixty-five. For those older individuals who do not have emails or struggle with, uh, that type of online activities, there are places such as Bridges and Peru that can assist those older adults in getting signed up. Getting signed up right now does not mean, okay, I'm on the list. What will, what will happen is after they get that first round collected, they're gonna send what they call the golden ticket out and that will also be via the email. Um, everybody knows that in Region Two here in, uh, our area, we're moved to Tier One, which means that we will be able to go inside, eat inside and go to a bar inside. They are still requesting though that you maintain, um, twenty-five percent capacity or twenty-five people or less, uh, no large groups staying together. Uh, just because the vaccine's gonna be available and we're opening to Tier One, doesn't mean that we can relax all of our, uh, things that we're doing in place, such as we will continue to wear masks, we will continue to do, um, hygiene, washing our hands frequently and trying to stay six feet away from people. I'm, I'm very excited that we've moved to this, that the vaccine's becoming available. I'm very hopeful for twenty twenty-one, but I just want to remind people to be safe.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
Well, maybe it's because we just had a meeting on Wednesday, but this is the first time ever. I have nothing new to report. That's it.
Thank you. You didn't, you didn't use your allotted five minutes.
I'll save it for another week.
I think Kerry covered it. Uh, I had some complaints about people being on the ice at McFedron Park too and, um, I think Kerry kinda covered that right there, so.
Our concern is we don't want people to get hurt.
Well, no, no.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Uh, I just got, uh, two short things. Uh, Oglesby City Hall will open to the public for business inside on Monday, February first, and bids for the two city trucks will be opened at ten AM Monday, Feby first, February first, twenty twenty-one. Um, I'll entertain a motion and second to go into closed session to discuss the minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purpose of approval by the body of, by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by five ILCS one two zero slash two parentheses, parentheses twenty-one and five ILCS one two zero slash two point zero six parentheses D.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Augur Bay?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Gravara?
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah, we should do that every quarter.
We're, we're moving right along. Our concern now is that we're able to get, to set the fee, um, to the Melonson, that will improve our reliability and enhance the growth of the website. Uh, the bulk of it was, uh, was GTI. They, uh, they're, uh, the amount they gotta pay for their building from what was seventy-four thousand dollars. You know, I like to pick that every, every month if I could, but.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Now, talk about the lemons. Yours mine. Do I root for Rogers? Do I don't like? Or do I root for Lady who I really don't like? Ah, that's a tough decision for you.
I don't agree.
Oh, I don't know. All those years, I'm a Jets fan.
I think he's a V underdog too in this case.
All those years where he tormented my Jets.
Yeah, yeah. He tormented everybody.
He did. He, 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 one of some funny stories. I'll tell you a quick one. I turned in an interview with Bernie Accordis, he backed the GM of the Giants, who even though they're not division rival, he called on his scouting department and said, you know, actually going to ball, give me a report we did on Brady coming out of Michigan. I want to see what the hell we missed. He said, I'm looking for a report and we didn't miss anything. It's all there. You know, not a big crime arm, but offset by excellent athleticism, field vision, decent mobility, excellent handling. The only negative was the lack of tape and that was more how Michigan used him than the fact that he was hurt all the time and anything like that. He said, we really didn't see any hurt negatives. The positives were all on display. I have no reason to think that anybody else's scouting was terribly different than ours. To this day, I can't explain why we all let it drop in football. It's always like, super eager to play there.
I just think how it there to even feel after missing the people they missed on that court right there.
Watson and Watson.
Holmes, sure, yeah.
Watson's about to become available. I mean, interesting considering.
Yeah. My son lives real close to where Watson went to kind of, or went, played high school football.
Oh, really?
My son says, he's a big football fan, so he's like, yeah, I saw this guy play many times, you know? They, they ended up winning this big championship.
Jared, you know?
Jared, he said he, he, for now, high school, Jared, but, but, yeah.
He was never having a new recruit, particularly. I don't know, he was a five-star, uh, you know, different staff.
You know, but, he's kind of worth their money.
Yeah. Where, where, where did he go to high school? Where did?
Gainesville, Gainesville, Georgia.
Gainesville?
Yeah, he was at Gainesville, Georgia. And my son lives in Murrayville, which is like, his office, he owns, uh, my son owns the nation's largest place of Panero Dog compound.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, and then he owns one of Jordan's, the third largest roofing company in Georgia.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he did.
He did.
Look for him. You too.
You too. You too.
I need a motion and second to go back into open session.
I'll make a motion to go back into open session.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Conlon.
Aye. Curran. Aye.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
I now need a motion and second to release the following closed session minutes. Five twenty, twenty nineteen. Seven fifteen, twenty nineteen. Ten seven, twenty nineteen. Twelve two, twenty nineteen. One twenty, twenty twenty. Four eight, twenty twenty. Five four, twenty twenty. Seven six, twenty twenty. Nine eight, twenty twenty. Ten five, twenty twenty.
I will make a motion to release the closed minutes.